And now the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order. We begin with approval of minutes for September fourteenth. Questions, comments, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, any more comments? If not, on favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Commissioner Kiefer, would you begin with comments, sir?
Nothing today.
Thank you. Commissioner Burkett?
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to start by saying we're praying for continued quick recovery of Commissioner Baker. I spoke with Terry on Sunday night, and he was in good spirits and had a really positive attitude. And he also spoke very highly of the staff at Meredith's. Last Thursday, I visited all the sites that we had people working on or at for the Day of Caring sponsored by United Way. If I missed you while I was running around, I apologize. We had over fifty-five staff who participated in the Day of Caring. On Friday, I visited the Amazon Warehouse on Clayton Boulevard with other county staff and other members of the community. And although they are not running at full steam yet, they expect to at some point by December or January, employ approximately twenty-five hundred employees. And then lastly, yesterday I presented a citation to the ice cream shop in Hagerstown. They're located just across the street from the courthouse and feature South Mountain Creamery Ice Cream. And I think it's kind of great that we have a local business supporting another local business. I know this weekend is thunder in the streets and some other events here in Hagerstown. So while you're out, maybe you can stop down and support this small business. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
Hey, good morning. I was on vacation last week, so I do, I do have to mention that I, you know, felt bad I couldn't make some of the functions. Day of Caring staff, what I saw was did a great job. Saw a lot of pictures out there and, and I wanted to thank staff for getting so involved. I did regret missing the opening of the ice cream shop. They're friends of mine, Noel, Melissa and Brian Noel. So I did call and apologize for not making it there. And, and also Veterans Emergency Restoration Downtown. I'm a veteran, so I try to support the veterans every time I can, but I congratulate them on their opening of their business downtown. I think it's all good.
Good. First, thanks to all the other commissioners for covering our events, and some of us can't be there. It's important that we do. So thanks to the commissioners and staff that do that. Last night, I received a surprise phone call from Vice President Terry Baker. It made my day, made my week to hear his voice and know that he's rapidly improving and getting stronger every day. So he asked me to express his thanks to everyone who has prayed and kept him in his thoughts. Also, I'd like to thank United Way and our county employees for participating in the Day of Caring. I too traveled around to a couple of the spots and saw the energy and the goodness that that day actually does for our community. And on another positive note, I'd like to read a letter from County Executive Frederick County Jan Gardner to Washington County. Dear Washington County, please accept my sincere appreciation for the support provided by Washington County Fire and Rescue prior to and during the funeral services for Frederick County Battalion Chief Joshua Laird. Your assistance allowed all of our fire and rescue personnel to be present for each other and for the Laird family during the funeral services. As you know, such a tragic line of duty death not only impacts his family, but every member of his fire service family who knew, respected, and worked with Battalion Chief Laird. Your support ensured that all our calls for emergency services received a timely response while allowing Frederick County firefighters to attend the service and pay their respects. It is heartening to know we can count on our neighbors in Washington County during this difficult times. Signed respectfully, Jan Gardner, County Executive. I want to thank Jan personally for all the, from all the commissioners for that letter. And there's too many county people to thank, from Dave Hayes to Brian Lowman, down to all the individual fire companies who provided manpower and apparatus for that. So thank you, Jan Gardner, for that recognition, and thank you to all the Washington County people involved in that. And that concludes my report. We would now go to staff comments. Would you want to go first?
Commissioners, I have an appointment, a reappointment request from the Washington County Mental Health Authority, requesting that you accept the recommendation to reappoint Julie Matheny to serve a second three-year term as a child advocate through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Reappoint Reagan Klutz to serve a second term as the Citizen at Large through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And to accept the recommendation to reappoint Edward Brantever to serve a second three-year term as the elder advocate through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And to formally appoint Kelly Black to serve as secretary with the Mental Health Authority through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, any other comments? On favor, say aye. Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Legal?
Good morning, Commissioners. We have received a request from the Town of Williamsport for a letter of support. They are applying for a community development block grant, an amount of eight hundred thousand dollars to fund needed sewer system improvement project in the Town of Williamsport. And they'd like a letter of support from the commissioners indicating that the commissioners are in support of this project as it will enable the Town of Williamsport to address the issues with an aging sewer system. The funds obtained through this grant will aid the Town of Williamsport to improve the aging system and improve the quality of life for its residents.
I'll make a motion to approve a letter in support of the grant.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, any other comments? If not, on favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Mr. Downey, anything else?
That's it. We'll prepare the letter.
County Administrator?
Oh yeah, just a few things. Thank you, President Klein. Good morning, Commissioners. I too want to thank all of our county employees for participating in Day of Caring. As Commissioner Burkett said, I think we had between fifty-five and sixty employees that were out doing community service. Do want to give special thanks to Brittany, who's in the audience, I know she probably don't want me to, and Andrew Eshelman for all their work behind the scenes and pulling that together on the county's behalf. So thank you to everyone. Did want to mention, just remind the commissioners about the Washington County Community Coalition. They're planning for this year and this year's legislative session. I forwarded you a week or so ago, a preliminary list of some legislative priorities that they're currently considering. So if you have a chance to take a look at that, if you have any thoughts on that, just reach out to me. They will, we've arranged, Krista's arranged for, Community Coalition will be coming into the commissioners on October nineteenth to have further discussions about that. So they'll be in in a few weeks to talk to you about that. And the last thing I just wanted to mention, back three or four months ago, this board met in a joint session with the City of Hagerstown. Both bodies had agreed to meet, to have a joint meeting in October. We'd originally scheduled that for October nineteenth. But I would like to ask the commissioners if they were okay if we moved that to October twenty-sixth. On our schedule right now, there's not an actual commissioner meeting that day. But there's some things that we want to discuss, and there's some people that are out on vacation the week before. So if it's okay with this board, I would like to schedule that joint meeting with the City of Hagerstown for October twenty-sixth.
Commissioners, thoughts? Everybody okay with our schedule?
Have any thoughts, or if you want to?
My schedule's okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Wayne, how about yours?
This should be fine.
Okay.
Commissioner Burkett? Okay, there you go. Very good. Thank you for asking.
So we will have that joint meeting on October twenty-sixth, so, and I think that's it.
All right, Danielle Weaver in the house. Danielle, are you listening? I asked Danielle and your team to come forward. I'm going to make a little announcement, then I'm going to call, I guess, Brittany, whoever we want to bring up to set with you. Your whole team or whoever. I'll start off, but correct me if I'm not accurate. I think it was Thursday or Friday, we, you received notification that the following award was presented to you and Brittany. The National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences National Capital Chesapeake Bay Chapter honors Danielle Weaver and Brittany Higgins as Mendendi, is that correct? I say it.
There is Mendy.
It's getting there, thank you very much. Not almost, thank you for your understanding. For significant contributions to the Emmy Award for Outstanding Public Service Announcement Spot, Single Spot, Threads of Hope Grandma's House from High Rock Studios. Congratulations, job well done. Danielle, would you explain a little bit about that project and award, that I want to have a photo opportunity with the commissioners, with your awards and your team?
Yeah, so throughout the pandemic, the public relations and marketing team, along with the Washington County Health Department, partnered with High Rock. And one of the campaigns that we did, that was for three public messaging campaigns. So one of them was for behavioral health, and this video was done and it was called Grandma's House. So we partnered with High Rock Studios and the really, the overall campaign was a way to connect the community during the pandemic. So we had a thread, a yellow thread that symbolically represents bringing the community together. So that was represented in the video that won the Emmy. And I would actually like to give a shout out to High Rock because they won three Emmys during this time. So, but one of them was Grandma's House, but I would truly have to say that it's a team effort. There's a lot of work that's also done behind the scenes. So I know that the award was presented to Brittany and I, but really I have to honor my entire staff because there's a lot of work that goes, you know, unrecognized that happens behind the scenes. So if I could, I'd like to bring up Katie Oder and Jonathan Bird as well. They both had a huge part in all of the public messaging campaigns that we worked with High Rock for.
Brittany, any comments before we pose for a picture?
I would just like to thank Lily Stinger, who is Grandma, featured in this public message campaign. And then Whitney Hope and her two young girls, Lily and Emma. Without them, we wouldn't have had a video. So just thank you to all of the willing participants that we reached out to over, during COVID. And just thank you for keeping everything safe during that time. Thank you for your support and helping spread these messages and awareness, and we're just excited.
Yeah, and we have to thank the commissioners too, because this wouldn't have been possible without you guys and the funding.
Join up front for a picture with our Emmy Award winner.
All right, is everyone ready? All right, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Folks, we have a public hearing scheduled at ten-thirty. Commissioners, would it be okay, we'll go forward to start that timely and come back to citizens' participation afterwards. Even though I don't see any citizens, but we'll repeat that. Next on the agenda would be public hearing, application for water and sewer plan amendment WS two-one-zero-one. Excuse me, my glasses are fogging up, so if I delay. Purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony concerning the matter. The procedure is as follows. One, we will have staff introduce the matter, after which the hearing will be open for public comment and testimony. Each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes to testify. Two, after everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the hearing will close. The commissioners will, the commissioners may then discuss the issue and take any action they deem appropriate, including adoption or rejection of the proposal, or they may take the issue under advisement and deliberate at a later date. Jill Baker, would you please introduce yourself in the matter?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jill Baker, the Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. As stated here before you this morning, for public comment is a water and sewer plan amendment for the Town of Hancock. The Washington County Water and Sewer Plan, while having the title of Washington County Plan, is really a collaborative plan between all utility providers in the county, including our towns, municipalities, and small water and wastewater treatment facilities that are private. As part of that plan, we do try to anticipate what needs are going to need to be met over a twenty-year horizon period and make plans for improvements, expansions, and so forth that may be necessary for growth or maintenance or replacement. So the Town of Hancock recently has had issues with the fact that their current wastewater treatment plant is still a lagoon system type plant. It really does not meet the standards of today's loading requirements as far as pollutants go with MDE, Maryland Department of Environment Standards. I do believe they are currently under a consent order, which they are trying to work through and get the necessary upgrades to this treatment plant so that they can get out from under that consent order and have a better treatment facility. They are looking to upgrade that treatment facility to what we call enhanced nutrient removal standards. That's the latest and best technology that's available to help remove pollutants such as nitrogen, phosphorus, ammonia, and so forth. Currently, the town wastewater treatment plant has a treatment capacity of three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand gallons per day. We actually have already planned for this in the water and sewer plan, so it is actually in there. We knew this was something that was needed, and we had put that in as a line item. The reason that we're here today is because that the Town of Hancock, after going through their feasibility studies and reviews, realized a need to actually also increase the capacity of that treatment plant, which is not included within our plan right now. So that is what the request really is for, is to not only just increase, or I'm sorry, to replace the system, but to actually increase the treatment capacity from three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand gallons per day to five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand gallons per day. The reason for this expansion, one, they're getting close to their limits in terms of how much capacity they have with the development that exists. But more importantly, the town has become very proactive in annexing some land to the north side of the town along Warfordsburg Road. And that includes some parcels that are in an industrial park up there that they are looking and trying to promote and market for economic development. But this also includes an existing business, I'm sure you're familiar with Lanco Penland. They're a milk producer, cheese processing facility up there. And they are looking to tap into the town's wastewater treatment. They cannot do that right now under the lagoon system. They could do that under the enhanced nutrient removal system. However, the capacity wouldn't be there, therefore the request to expand. So to make everything copacetic with their grant funding and Maryland Department of Environment Standards, we have to amend our plan to show that requested increase in capacity. I don't have anything further to add at this point. I'm happy to answer questions, or if you would just like to move on, that's the summary of this.
First, I can like to open it up to any citizens' comments. We can go to questions after that. Okay, we went out in public hearing for public comment. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and give us your name and address. Anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, now we'll open up for comments or questions from the commissioners.
Jill, I just have one. It's a curious question. What does Lanco do now? Where do they get their waste treated at?
They have their own onsite treatment facility. It's just a little, small package.
And it wouldn't handle expansion or anything, yeah. I was just curious.
I'm sorry, pardon me.
If they expanded, it wouldn't be big enough. That's why they want to tap in.
I don't know that they can expand it because of loading requirements.
The town was awarded some funding from the state for upgrades too, right, for their water sewer?
Yes, they have, they have received it, I think they have received some grants for the replacement portion of this. We're making sure they can get funding for the expansion part.
Kind of to Randy's comment, this is an issue I know the town has been dealing with for many years now. Maybe a decade, if not longer. And with the town's limited sewer capacity now, with the lagoon system that they have, not only is this beneficial to Lanco, which is the town's largest employer, I believe about a week or two ago, I spoke with some of the leadership at Lanco, and they're up to one-hundred-and-fourteen employees. Their opportunity to expand is really hampered by the town's inability to take on their sewer system. And right now, the, that company is, during certain times of the year, they can spray irrigate the fields around, around Lanco. And if they had a sewer system to dispose of that into, that could open up potentially that land to future development, like was mentioned. But this also handicaps the town in that if a company wanted to come in today, a large company of any size and employ a large number of people, they may not be able to tap into the town sewer system because of lack of supply. So I spoke to a town councilman yesterday about this project, and he mentioned about also how important it is to the town. So I hope we can get this approved today, and this is just a small piece. You know, this is just an approval.
Part of the puzzle, you're right.
Part of the puzzle. Very small piece, but important.
It says we can approve it today, right?
Yeah, what I'd like to do, if you have any more comments, I'll conclude the hearing, then we can take any action that we want, okay?
I'll defer to Kirk if, I don't think we need findings of fact for, because it's not a map amendment? Or do you want to, do you want, I'm asking, do you want a consensus so that we can come back for approval, or are you okay with them just approving?
Well, let me conclude.
Sorry, I apologize.
Okay, now, the public hearing is now concluded. Commissioners, comments, questions? To Jill. Jill, I'll open it up to you for your comment you had. What did you just state?
I just wasn't sure if it would be more prudent to do a consensus and come back with the formal ordinance? Or you want to go ahead and make the decision today?
I would learn or yield to legal for any comments or advice on that, but stops us from approving, or what's your thoughts?
Unlike the zoning ordinance, there isn't a requirement that you wait ten days before any change be effective. You can come to a consensus today. We can prepare the final documents and bring them back next week for approval under staff comments, if that's what the board's consensus would be.
Commissioners, we do either way.
Well, it says here in our, in our paper where it says they're recommended to draw consensus and then to either approve or deny their request after probably hearing closes, or deliberate on the issue at a later date. Is that what you just said?
Yes.
So I mean, I'm fine with it. So I don't know if we're voting or just consensus.
If we can vote today, we can, I'm okay voting today, whatever's the most expedient but proper path forward.
I agree with Commissioner Kiefer.
Yeah, I mean.
I think we can vote on it if, because we don't have to keep the case open and.
All right, Commissioners, our motion to approve it today is stated by Commissioner Kiefer.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Staff, anyone else? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you. Next, we're going to return to citizens' participation. Seeing no one, we'll go on to the next item, but it'd be. All, please come forward. How'd I miss you? You didn't raise your hand fast.
I didn't raise my hand.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Allison Harts Warren, Office of Grant Management. This morning, I'm here to seek your approval to accept the additional funding the local management board received from the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth, and Victim Services. On March twenty-third, I came before you to request approval to submit and accept funding for six-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-three dollars for the local management board initiatives here in Washington County. After receiving our reward, award, excuse me, the office was informed that Governor Hogan's supplemental budget number five for FY twenty-two included an additional million dollars for Children's Cabinet Inter-Agency Fund for local management boards, in which Washington County received thirty-seven-thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars, making our total this year six-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. So as our office is working on finalizing contracts, we wanted to be transparent with the acceptance of an additional funding over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
At first and second, any further discussion?
Just a question, Allison. Do you know which agency is likely to be the user of these funding?
We gave, the local management board met, and they voted to allocate the additional funding to school-based mental health services, and that's Brook Lane is the vendor, the Family Center Support Services through the Department of Social Services. And then additional money then also went to our office to offset administration expenses.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Now we'll continue with the agenda item, budget adjustment for the solid waste radio upgrades. Dave Mason, please come forward to introduce the matter.
Good morning. Good morning. Dave Mason, Deputy Director, Department of Solid Waste. I'm here today to, for a motion to approve budget adjustments for the Department of Solid Waste Radio Upgrades. The county is currently upgrading the radios for emergency services, Sheriff's Department. We use the same radio on similar frequencies, and we are also in need of an upgrade. So the budget adjustment is for the amount of twenty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and fifty cents. This will be for thirteen radios, or ten radios, six extra batteries and a block charger. Remaining radios will be purchased in next year's budget.
Commissioners, questions?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
At first and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, retiree premium pay for COVID-nineteen. Folks, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer.
Larry Atchison, Director of Human Resources.
And John Martorano is also on this agenda, right?
I'm here already.
He is here.
No introduction necessary?
I've already talked already, so.
Here to discuss retiree premium pay for COVID-nineteen as part of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. Last week, the commissioners expressed an interest in this agenda item coming before you for discussion. And so, just as we did approve the premium pay for employees using a systematic evaluation, as staff, we would ask that that same methodology be employed if this is approved by the commissioners today. I do want to just ask for some potential adjustment to this ARF as it's written. The premium pay for current employees obviously is paid through payroll. This agenda suggests that all of these payments, except one or two, would be paid through accounts payable and would then be, we would then provide a ten-nine-nine to the employee at the end of the year, and they would be taxed at that time. We're currently looking at this a little bit further. We want to make sure that we are in compliance with IRS guidelines as it relates to this. And if an employee will receive a W-2 in, for calendar year twenty-one, we may want to pay them through payroll and not as suggested in this ARF. And so I would, I would ask for the flexibility for us to make that decision if this moves forward with an approval today. Other than that, this is open for discussion if you have any questions or comments.
Just clarify that last statement. You would think if they're no longer employed, you'd have to do a ten-nine-nine, but that's not the case?
Well, we need to look at our payroll system to see if it's even possible. Actually, the thought came this morning. the thought came this morning as as this agenda item was coming up, if they were an existing employee and they're receiving a W-two for calendar year twenty-one, um then it may make more sense to pay them through payroll if we can open that up and make them an active employee again. Uh because at the end of the year, if I'm doing their taxes and I see they're getting a ten ninety-nine and a W-two, what other service did you provide? Were you an independent contractor? Not really. You know, so I think that we just need some further research. We want to make sure that we're paying it properly.
Trying to avoid any sticker shock at the last moment.
Well, and also, you know, at the end of the year, if they take those um the W-two and the ten ninety-nine to their tax preparer, they may have questions as well. And so we just want to avoid that upfront. So we just want to take a a little bit longer to research that before making payment. We're, so some of these may vary. If the employee retired, if this is approved and the employee retired in twenty-twenty and they don't have a W-two for twenty-one, they would certainly be paid through our accounts payable and they would receive a ten ninety-nine.
Commissioners, comments, questions?
I was gonna say, and I I I think, I'm sorry. I mean, I think we we have identified what we think's a number of employees.
It's about twenty-five.
About twenty-five.
Twenty-four, exactly.
So it's twenty-four. So there's twenty-four, I think. So just so you know, we have identified twenty-four people who worked sometime between March of twenty-twenty and March of twenty-twenty-one and then retired. So
Yes, sir.
They may be eligible for this.
Anything I'd I'd would support this with the flexibility. Just gives us an update if there's has, happens to be a staff who or something, so we're alert to how we can handle it.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioners, thoughts, comments, questions?
Yeah, I think this is appropriate. Uh you know, I was contacted, maybe many of us were contacted by uh an employee who worked during the entire timeframe that we're basing the payoff of, but then they retired right afterwards. And certainly they've subjected themselves um to the risks. And that's what we were doing with this plan was to, as a way to thank those employees who subjected themselves to coming to work. I would assume that, just for simplicity sake, s- an employee who worked full-time on on-site, wherever that may ma- maybe the detention center, for example, but they retired halfway during our timeframe, would be paid at the fifty percent rate? Is is that the assumption?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Is there a motion to approve with the flexibility?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that covers our agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion for closed.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.